All right, I think we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, good evening, everyone. Al, roll call.
Brunick. Here. Johnson.
Present.
Mybaum.
Present.
Minor.
Here.
Schramm.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Mayor Moser.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Here.
City Attorney Denherter.
Here.
All right, number two under routine business is approval of minutes of the regular meeting of October 11th, 2021. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Anybody in the public? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. And any abstention. All right. Our third order of business is a proclamation tonight for General Aviation Appreciation Month. Whereas general aviation and Chan Gurney Municipal Airport play a critical role in the lives of our citizens, as well as in the operation of our businesses, and whereas the city of Yankton has a significant interest in the continued vitality of general aviation, aerospace, aircraft manufacturing, educational institutions, aviation organizations, public airports and airport operations, and whereas Yankton has a full-service airport serving many sizes of aircraft, both corporate and private, and whereas Chan Gurney Municipal Airport supports more than 7,700 general operations annually and has 37 aircraft based at the facility, and whereas general aviation contributes to the Yankton economy and medical care and boosts economic development for Yankton and surrounding communities, and whereas according to the South Dakota State Aviation System Plan, 2020 through 2030, general and commercial aviation at Chan Gurney Municipal Airport supports nearly 4.6 million in business sales, including nearly 1 million in personal income and more than 40 jobs, of which agricultural spraying supports nearly $2.2 million in business sales, including over 350,000 in personal income and more than 10 jobs. And whereas general aviation is integral to the city's response to emergencies and natural disasters, as well as being a key component of area businesses, and whereas Yankton depends heavily on general aviation and Chan Gurney Municipal Airport for the continued flow of commerce, tourists, and visitors to our city and state, now therefore I, Stephanie Moser, Mayor of the City of Yankton, do hereby proclaim October 2021 in the City of Yankton as General Aviation Appreciation Month. And I understand Steve Hamilton is here to accept the proclamation. And I'll have you actually come up front and maybe share a few words, if you would, please.
For the proclamation, and I extend a thanks from the Yankton Regional Aviation Association, which has 99 members, South Dakota Pilots Association, which has 405 members, and the Yankton Airport Advisory Board, of which I'm the vice chair. And I'd also like to thank Tony for suggesting the proclamation for the city. I think this is the third or fourth one that the city has done, and we sure appreciate the recognition. And I also want to thank Dave Mingo and Mike Reinstedt for doing an outstanding job of operating the airport. And I know Adam's going to do a good job, too. Right? Very good. Thank you very much.
Smile.
Perfect.
All right, I will now turn it over to City Manager Leon for her report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission and public. Our mission is to provide exemplary experiences, services, and spaces that create opportunities for everyone to learn, engage, and thrive. And we got reminded of that this Thursday and Friday when our department head staff and commission got together for two days of strategic planning, which I think was fruitful. I think we had a lot of good conversation and good opportunity to do some team building and have some of those long talks that we don't typically get to have. The strategic planning is still ongoing. We encourage everyone to still participate in the survey, which can be found on our website. We'd like as much input as possible. Right now, that information is being collected, and our consultant will take all that information along with the information and feedback she had from our two days of planning and put that together for us. There will still be time for public input even after that, because as you know, you adopt the strategic plan. So probably after the course of the holidays will come before you, I'm hoping by that time with the document for you to review, and we'll present it at a work session or in a commission meeting, and we can get some public feedback. But overall, lots of good stuff, I thought, came out of that. And a lot of affirmation, too, that the strategic planning process works when we come together and spend that time concentrating on where we want to be in the future. We can focus on that and stick to priorities. So we appreciate everybody's hard work and help on that, and also appreciate Colleen in my office who helped coordinate everything for us and kept us on track and helped with the consultants organizing the citizens' groups, et cetera. So I have an invitation I'm going to pass this way and that way. It is an invitation that Mayor Moser received to the Yankton Rotary Club 100th Anniversary Celebration Gala, which will be taking place next Tuesday, November 2nd. She's unable to attend. They're asking for an RSVP by tomorrow evening, so there's information on the card. If you're interested in attending on behalf of the city, please RSVP, jot that down. And also, if you think you're attending, let me know so I can keep count. If there's more than five of you wanting to attend, or four of you wanting to attend, we need to notify the press. So if you'll just take a look at that. Hundred years of Rotary is a pretty big deal, so it'd be nice if we had some representation from the city. Also, I want to visit with you a little bit about medical marijuana. Just when you thought you were done hearing about it, there's more. Today, the state has put the applications, the state applications, online, so that's up and ready to go. That has nothing to do with us per se. Those applicants, those folks that are interested in applying, or that are our applicants, they have to make that application themselves online. So we'll be directing them that that's available, that they need to fill that out, they need to pay their fee, and we'll assist them in directing them to where those things are. Our next step in this process is certifying the folks that we have applications approved already. And that certification was emailed to us, and I believe it's online now. It was emailed to us sometime late afternoon today. So we do have that. So tomorrow, Lisa and the rest of our local team, Medical Cannabis, will be putting together that information and notifying the state of our five applicants who have completed our process. And just, I know you, some of you have heard who those are, but I'm going to share those with the public for the public's benefit, because we've had a lot of questions. So the name of the first business is, and these are not in any order, this is just, I think these are just in alphabetical order, Compassionate Care LLC, business address 1917 Broadway, owner John Keys. Genesis Farms LLC, business address 2500 South Dakota Highway 50. Justin Johnson, Troy Erickson, and Marilyn Erickson. Green Machine Inc., 2020 Capital, Jeffrey Dehoff. River City Cannabis LLC, 2901 Broadway, Carrie Trimble Whale and Toby Whale and Zaza, 605, 313 Cedar, Thomas Naffo and Stephen Jones owners. So those are the five that we will send certificates of completion to the state for. And the applicants then are responsible for filling out the state application and paying the state fee. We, once they do that, they'll be put into the state's lottery system for Yankton, and the state will receive our ordinance, which indicates that two of the owners will be awarded the state licenses here for Yankton. So that's to say if they complete the state application appropriately. So the state may find something, you know, in their application that's not right, or something that doesn't fit their criteria, and then they would be thrown out. But, you know, provided everything's filled out appropriately, the state will notify us of who those are. We have to have those in by November 1st, and so the state, the applicants don't have a lot of time to get that information to the state. But I don't know how long after November 1st it will be until we find out, but I would suspect at least 90 days. But I don't know the answer to that. I'll keep you guys, I'll keep you all posted as I know more information. So, any questions on that? Okay. Just a reminder that Sunday is Halloween, so I know our police department would like us all to make sure that we're keeping an extra special eye out for ghosts and goblins and trick-or-treaters. And I understand now there's trick-or-treaters and trick-or-trunkers? Yeah, trunk-or-treaters. Trunk-or-treaters and trick-or-treaters. And as a kid, I would have hit them all. If I would have known there was a trunk full of candy somewhere, that would have been like heaven on earth for me. So if there's no more questions for me, I'll let you attend to your business.
Are there any questions for the city manager? All right, moving on, now is the time in place for anybody in the public who would like to address the city commission for items not on the agenda. That was hard for me to get out. All right, seeing no movement, we'll move along in the agenda. There are no consent agenda items tonight, so we move right on to old business. Number one is consideration of memorandum 21-216 regarding the request for a special malt beverage on-sale retailer's license for one day, which is November 6, 2021, for families feeding families. Tara Prokurek, coordinator, and that will be at the NFIA Archery Center at 800 Archery Lane. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this agenda item? Would anybody in the public like to address the commission? Al, roll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Aye, motion carries. All right, moving on to new business, maybe. All right, number one is consideration of memorandum 21-217 regarding resolution 21-88, which is a conditional use permit in an A1 agricultural district for a school accessory structure that is located at Mount Marty University. The address is 612 Summit Street, and according to our agenda, it is for a proposed locker room that will be built at the practice facility. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion? All right, anybody in the public like to address the commission? Okay, Al, roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number two under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-218 regarding resolution 21-87. It's the transfer of a land lease for hangar number 37 at Chan Gurney Municipal Airport. Dave Tungy, current owner to Redline Properties LLC. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion?
I would have a question for Dave Mingo, since he's at the microphone. Dave, can you remind me, so for a transfer of this kind of lease, there's no fee associated with that, is that correct?
That's correct. We don't have a fee structure for this. We did have a discussion with the airport board at their last meeting about whether or not that would be something that they would want to recommend to the city commission in the future, since there are some staffing costs involved with, anytime there's an administrative action like this that has to be prepared for commission consideration. We're in the process right now of kind of surveying other airports to see what they do in that respect, and we'll bring that information back to the airport board and see if they have a recommendation for you in the future.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Would anybody in the public like to address the commission? All right, Al, roll call.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number three under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-219, which is an introduction, first reading to establish November 8, 2021, as the date for a public hearing to consider ordinance 1056, a rezoning from an industrial one to a B3 central business. I love the name of this. It's from Don't Tell My Wife, I Bought This LLC, and Five Future Properties LLC Owners. The address is 215 Mulberry Street. Can I get an introduction? Introduced. Thank you. Number four under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-214 and resolution 21-84, a resolution establishing a base salary adjustment of 4% and a one-step plan for all non-union eligible employees of the city of Yankton effective January 1st, 2022. And I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Leon to walk us through this proposal before asking for a motion.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission. So there's two parts really to this motion. The recommendation for 2022 does provide a 4% increase in the base adjustment classification plan and the one-step increase. This is for nonrepresented civilian employees that are eligible. And I say civilian here because we have a different pay structure and classification system now for our law enforcement officials. So this would be, if you approve this this evening in 2022, then the nonunion, nonrepresented civilian employees would receive a 4% increase in 2022. You'll recall that you've already approved the represented city employees in the AFSMI, the American State and Federal Municipal Employee Civilian Union. You've already approved a 4% for 2022 for them. That's already been done and approved. So this would be for the nonunion eligible folks. When it comes to law enforcement, this recommendation provides for a 3% increase to the base adjustment of their classification plan and one-step increase for their step plan, and that's for the nonunion, nonrepresented, those law enforcement employees that are not represented by the Fraternal Order of Police. So the reason why that's different from the civilian is, you'll recall that the commission adjusted the salary for law enforcement citywide about a year ago, and there was quite a substantial increase there. And you'll also recall that their steps are actually larger than the civilian or non-law enforcement steps. So they have a bigger percentage between steps than the civilian employees. So in all, that is relatively equal, not exactly the same, but it's relatively the equal amount of increase. This does not impact the Fraternal Order of Police represented employees, and that's because we're still under negotiations with those employees, with that collective bargaining unit. So that's why they're not included in this. And then the only others that it does not include then are your employees, who of course you know are myself and Ross and Al. So, but this would encompass everyone else. And happy to answer questions if there's any confusion. It's a little bit different than what we've done in the past, having a different rate for law enforcement than for the other employees, but we have changed that pay structure. So happy to answer your questions.
Seeing no mics, come on with questions for the city manager. What is your pleasure?
I'll make the motion to prove it.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further commission discussion on this agenda item? Would anybody in the public like to address the commission? Al, roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
I will abstain. My husband is a city employee. Motion carries. Number five under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-213 regarding a vehicle purchase from the state bid list. It is from Lamb Motor Company out of Oneida, South Dakota. Local dealers, just to make it all clear here, do not participate in the fleet management deals. This would be for a 2022 Ford Expedition for the cost of $43,000. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this agenda item?
Having recently added to my family, seeing the price of a 2022 Ford Expedition at $43,000, that's a pretty good deal. But just to reiterate what the mayor had mentioned, so we don't have any local dealers who participate in the fleet management, and they don't even, I guess, consider the opportunity to maybe even match this price on a onesie-twosie basis. Is that fair to say?
That's been our experience, correct? I don't know, Dwayne, if you're taking the lead on this on behalf of Taylor, but I know in the past, that has been our experience.
That's correct. We didn't contact them directly in this instance, but historically, every time we've talked to them about state bid on specifically Ford Motor Vehicles, police departments, interceptors, also other vehicles, they have declined to participate because they're unable to access the fleet pricing.
And since they're unable to access the fleet pricing, that's just a formality that they would have to overcome? Or I guess I don't quite understand the reason why we can't get over the hump with our local dealers here?
That's a good question. I'm not familiar enough with the Ford Motor Company pricing structure to be able to answer that. As you mentioned, this is a good price on the vehicle, and I would imagine there's additional incentives for those participating dealers in that program, but I'm not familiar enough with the specifics to answer that in detail.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Any other commission discussion? Would anybody in the public like to address the commission? If you would step to the mic, please give us your name and your address.
My name's Elizabeth Lynch. I'm at 1504 Burley. Is this for a specific person that is on the commission or works for the city, or it's just a vehicle for the city?
It's just a vehicle for the city, so we have a number of vehicles that we use for travel around town, but also when we take travel and training, you know, we take a vehicle, you know, if we have training in peer, we have things like that nature.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else in the public? Al, roll call.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number six under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-220 and resolution 21-89 regarding a rate increase for the Huether Family Aquatic Center. I have asked Mr. Larson, Director of Parks and Recreation and City Events, to walk the commission through the proposal before asking what your pleasure is.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and city commissioners. So we've talked a lot of data up to this point. You've been updated on different things. So looking now at budget, as we've gotten some final concessions and utility billing and some things like that, obviously we'll have a few outstanding bills yet to go. But originally, we had budgeted after, again, not debt service, but just looking at operating expenses, which is wages and other expenses, and then revenues. We had budgeted going into this year that we thought there'd be a loss of about $175,580. Again, going back historically, those last few years at the memorial pool, 2015, we general fund transferred about a little over $137,000. 2016, we general fund transferred about a little over 127. 2018, as we knew we were getting closer to a new facility, we cut back on some capital things. So 2018, the transfer was a little over $113,000, and 2019 was a little, almost $98,000. Again, we knew going in we were going to have about three times the facility what we had previously. So we budgeted pretty aggressively on expenses. So again, going into the season, our budget for expenses was almost $759,000. And revenues, again, we try to be conservative on revenues, and going into the season, we had budgeted for revenues about $583,300. So that's where we got to that loss number. So as we start to look at this year, and we did have a great year with all the patrons that used it, and the season pass sales and daily pass sales, we were good on the expenses. Again, we had budgeted $758,880. Our operating expenses to this point, we'll still have some bills coming in, but we're at $627,932. So we were well under the $758. On the revenue side, we had budgeted $583,300. We're at $576,056. So pretty close to being spot on where we had budgeted for revenues. Couple things to point out on that loss. So that puts us currently at a loss of $51,876. We also had almost $20,000 in pass sales in 2020. That's not accounted for in this loss. We will have pass sales in 2021, November and December this year. I don't know what that amount's going to be, but last year we had $20,000 in sales. So again, numbers to think and remember as we talk about where we're at budgeting-wise and how the facility turned out. Again, talking about some different items we had accounted for going in, we were looking at a 12-week season, about three months, being open 84 days. at a 12-week season, about three months, being open 84 days. We knew the splash pad would stay open after the season. And again, when you think splash pad, we still have expenses there. We're still going to have water. We're still going to chemically treat it. We don't heat it. So that's a big deal on the expense-wise that we don't heat that. But the splash pad was going to stay open. We were going to have continued expenses with that, and really, there's no revenue that comes with that. That's just part of what we had talked about with the new facility, the waiting pool goes away. We wanted an amenity that the public could use for free, no cost at some point. The other thing to remember is we did continue with the water walking. So we had 12 additional days after the season was over for open swims where we kept the lazy river operational water chemicals, and we do heat that water. So that's a big deal on the expense side of things. So again, we had 12 additional days that we had not accounted for when we did our original budgeting as we went. So as we look at next year, again, we're proposing a 2% increase on season passes and daily sales. And again, when we say 2%, we round that up to the nearest dollar. We like to work in even numbers. That way, when our high school and college kids, as people walk up, most people will pay with credit cards, but every now and then we get cash, it's just easier to have that round number. So our season pass this last year was $60. We proposed it would go to 62. And the daily pass was $9, and we would propose that goes to $10. Again, fees and taxes would be added on top of that. In the proposal that we gave to you, we also spell out we'd like to set that 2% going forward for 2023 and 2024 also. Again, with, as we've been reading, just like everybody else in the news, electric and gas are going to be variables. We're just not sure where they're going. We know they're going up. That we do know. To give you an example of how that could affect us in our budgeting, actuals, actuals, again, through our paying last month, we, again, we'll have a few more, but they won't be near as big as when we're in operational mode. Electricity bills for this year were $37,500. Fuel heating to heat the water in the pools was $16,521. So that'll be the variable. Some of the others, again, stuff fluctuating, goes up, goes down. Hopefully, wages, we have a pretty good idea now going into this year. We were aggressive this year. We gave raises throughout the summer. We had bonuses in August. Will we have to do that in future summers? I don't know the answer to that one either. We'll know that more as the rest of the community understands workforce and how it is easy it is to recruit and retain workers. But we had a good year worker-wise that way. So we do propose 2% in 2022, in 2023, and 2024. If, again, we get through or into next summer and something really changes, we may have to come back and try to adjust that. But we're just trying to stay ahead of the game as we move forward because we know our expenses are not going to go down in future years.
Questions for Todd?
I've got a question. I guess probably it's been something that's been said numerous times. Has there been any thought of a family pass?
No.
The reason that I bring that up is I think of myself and my family. I've got three boys, a 17-year-old, a 14-year-old, and a nine-year-old as of yesterday. We bought three family passes this last year. My oldest boy, I think, went to the pool once. He's 17, he's working. My 14-year-old went, I don't know if it was two times or maybe three times. My youngest boy, who was part of the Boys and Girls Club, he went a bunch. Okay? So we had, we paid for three passes. Actually, my parents, as a Christmas gift to my children, or my wife and I's kids, got them the passes. Next year, looking forward with the fact that my middle son and my oldest son didn't really use the passes, I don't necessarily know that we'll get three more passes next year. However, we might be interested in getting three passes if it was three passes that was a family pass, because then it turns into my wife and myself, who would have, I think my wife went once last year. I went at the grand opening. But I could see in our family, I could see us doing, buying three passes as a family pass, but if there is not a family pass, it's going to be one pass for the most part. Just the dynamic, I mean, I understand there's lots of other dynamics also. I just wanted to, this is my experience, and I wanted to pass that on. The other thing that I had was with the rates, we have a rate, like with passes, of it's the same whether you live inside town or outside of town, where we have the property tax, which is paying for the pool. I stopped at the library tonight just to check, because I remember, I grew up out at Riverside Acres, and so to get a library card, it costs us a little bit because we lived outside of town. And also, while I was there, I renewed my library card, which had expired a couple of months. I recommend everybody get your library card. If you don't have it, get one. If it's expired, like mine was, get it renewed. While I was there, I had asked them about that, because I remember having to pay that, and it's $20 per year, or $10 for six months, or $5 for three months, because you're outside of the city limits, so you're outside of the, you know, you're not paying property taxes on your home. You maybe have a business or a property inside of town, so you're paying property taxes there. But I would like, it'd be nice to see, like, a little bit of an additional fee on maybe an annual pass of, say, like what the library is, of $5 for three months. The pool pass is three months. Maybe it'd be an additional $5 over the top of the 62, or however that works out. I understand we need to generate more revenue with the pool, but I would, I'm just trying to offer my perspective and then also, you know, give the thought of the outside of the community.
Todd, I had a few data questions for you, and you may not have the data in front of you, but for the Boys and Girls Club students who are, make up a pretty large number of the users during the day of the pool, what are they paying? Do they get an annual pass? Do they get a daily pass? What's the, how are the Boys and Girls Club?
Nope. They get a, anybody that comes to the facility either has a day pass or a season pass, the Boys and Girls Club, those kids do season passes.
So the all Boys and Girls Club, through the club, come as a season pass holder?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then out of the daily passes and the season pass holders, what percentage, if you can ballpark it, were from outside of the Yankton zip code?
While Todd's looking that up, I'll just remind the commission that there are some season pass holders, Boys and Girls Club members, other children, and some adults who are utilizing the GUPPI grant. So for those folks, that fee is out of reach. They are using that. So I guess we could pull those numbers as well. I don't know if Todd will have them handy, but there is still funds remaining in the GUPPI grant, and they're still receiving funds. But there would be then some that have that season pass because they have the ability to access. And we, the Boys and Girls Club or the center administers that for us. But the thought is everyone pays the day pass because of some of the confusion and some of the difficulties we did deal with with family passes when we utilized those. And we can talk about those if the commission wants to. Did you find that, Todd?
Yeah, yeah, hold on.
Actually, I texted you ahead of time. Sorry.
I do have a quick question. So the Boys and Girls Club and the center, they administrate the GUPPI grant?
Correct.
And do you have to be a member of either of those to receive the GUPPI grant?
No, no.
I just want to make sure that our community knows that they, because I don't know exactly what the qualifications or the, how you apply or how you qualify for that grant.
So we try to be as discreet as we can about those types of things, and if somebody contacts the city, we put them, depending upon who it is, whether it's a, you know, an adult, or whether it's a family, or whether it's just an individual child, you know, in contact with those folks. And they, in some cases, it's fully a grant, you know? Sometimes it's entirely, the GUPPI grants covers the whole fee. And in some cases, somebody might be able to pay $20, or, you know, whatever amount they feel they can, and it's maybe a sliding. But they work that out with each individual, and we don't know that, and we don't know, nor do we want to know, or nor we provided a list of those folks who are receiving that assistance. We just let them deal with it. And because, you know, again, living with our mission, we just want everyone to have the opportunity to have fun there and play there, and that's what our purpose is. So what we do do is encourage people to continue to give to that, and we hope that as people continue to give to the aquatics facility, which they have since we've opened, that we always make that, you know, something, a suggestion to people as well. Of course, we do have needs as well at the facility itself, but that's going to be, always be a need as well.
Question again. What was your question?
It was what percent of the day pass and the season pass were from the Yankton zip code?
So season passes, total sales. Were we at, we were at 20? Well, you can figure it out, I guess, by doing the math backwards. Anyway, 17, in day passes, 17% of our passes were from outside 57078, so 3,558 of them. 83% were within city limits. That was 16,914. So you can add those two numbers together, I guess, to see where we ended up at. We were a little over 20, a little under 21, I think, thousand?
That was the day passes?
That was day passes. Season passes, 70, and again, season passes, we sold 3,970. I don't have the actual number right in front of me. So 79% of those season passes were sold within city limits.
Thanks, Todd. So with that then, Todd, the 2022 prices that are being proposed, if those were in effect here in 2021, instead of a gap of 51,000, we'd be looking at a gap of?
Yeah, do the math.
35,000? 40,000?
So on 3,970, take that times two. So you'd be, without putting it into my calculator, so that's going to be about $8,000 more. And on season pass sales, or sorry, on daily pass sales, again, we were just under 21,000, so we'll go to 20,000 as an even number. It would be an additional $20,000, so that would be about 28,000 additional dollars.
But I think the answer is no. I mean, we don't, we won't know what the, we won't know what the expenses are, of course, next year. We won't know if we'll be have, you know, we had a really dry, hot summer, so we had a lot of open swim days. We may have much, many, few, we could have, if we have a cool year, fewer days. We don't know what concessions will do. We don't know. There's so many unknowns. So yes, we always try to close, we're trying to close that gap, but we're not necessarily thinking that that increase is going to cover all the remaining expenses next year.
So we'll also be increasing fees for concessions. We're looking at rental rates. We'll be increasing fees for rental rates. So all fees will be adjusted up. It's just the season pass and the daily pass that we bring forward to the city commission.
So are we also taking into account, though, you talked about 2020 sales, the $20,000 from 2020? Does that 50 shortfall also include that?
Nope, does not include that money.
So we're really about 30 short, correct?
Yes, we still have some expenses that'll come in, and we have more revenue yet to come in when we do our November and December pass sales.
My opinion at this point would be that the loss that we're looking at here as part of this agenda item scares me not at all. I think this is still a huge win for the community, and we are, in fact, in the business of running services that aren't necessarily intended to turn profits. You know, this is public service kind of stuff. And actually, our pool, having run it for so many years at a pretty significant deficit, this is, I'd hesitate to say it, but it's like mice nuts in the grand scheme of things. So while I appreciate the conservatism and wanting to stay ahead of the game a little bit and raising rates, on the flip side, I can actually see an advantage in keeping them consistent, not only year over year, but perhaps as a multi-year strategy. The good thing is that you and the team in the rec department, Todd, have done a great job of the refreshments side of things, the additional amenities, being able to sell quality products out of the food stand. I heard nothing but great things about that, and I'm sure that's going to continue to be a pretty vital part of the operation. And if inflation comes, if prices go up, I know you and the team will be able to be dynamic and make changes appropriately there. But, you know, realistically, we're talking about, we could raise the rates of jumbo ICs to five bucks, and we could also close the gap even further if we really wanted to. But we have to be mindful of perhaps the goodwill in all of this, and there is, I suppose, the potential for losing out on sales just by saying that we're planning on raising rates every year for the next couple of years, regardless of whatever the circumstances might be. So that's kind of where my head is at right now. Again, I appreciate that the proposal is small dollar amounts, but I do think that there is a real possibility of leaving rates where they're at, and we can continue to work with you and the team to make sure that we get as close to being whole as possible year over year, but maybe not sweat the small stuff. And I know there's probably a former commissioner out there who says, well, 51,000, that's a lot of money. But maybe not in the grand scheme of things.
And I would echo what Tony's saying in that, you know, inflation's not lost on us as a city, but also on everyone's paycheck. Inflation is just eating away bit by bit, and I think the optics of us keeping consistent is a goodwill token, as Tony said to the community, that it's, this is something that we're not going to change on you. It's $2 more, but everything's $2 more. So I think it's just another way to show thank you for the community for voting this in and doing, making this aquatic center to be an outstanding facility.
Certainly, on the staff's perspective, we'll implement the desires of the commission. Remind the commission that, you know, we propose this not because we think we're going to necessarily make this a profit center. We've been down this road before with the Summit Activities Center, and now we're, you know, on track for taking over $700,000 from the general fund to offset the cost there. We've been on this track with Fox Run Golf Course. We're just not able to, we weren't responsible business operators there, and part of being a responsible business operator is to forecast. And so agreed and understood, and we'll certainly follow through with any of the commission's We also know with the family passes that that's complex. It's convenient for those who have that situation. It's complex in other areas, but we'll happily and readily follow through with your desires. We just would like everyone to understand that based on our experience operating these facilities, we know that you have, it's like water and sewer rates. You have to continue, even though it's difficult. have to continue, even though it's difficult to, to continue to increase your rates. But if that's not right for the commission right now, we'll respect that and, and move forward in that way.
I just wonder if there's not an option that, being that our, our city is essentially, our, our citizens are bearing the brunt of this burden of the, the complex, I wonder if there's not a way that, that we can keep those rates the same for the people that live within the city limits, and maybe as, as the visitors come in, maybe they pay a couple bucks extra because they're, they're not, they're not paying for it per se. Is, is there a way to potentially do that? I'm assuming that as you buy your passes, that you're, they're getting your information. They know whether or not we live within the city, and then maybe that can be some type of adjustment.
And we could do, I mean, of course, we can do as the commission wishes. We would have to, you know, disseminate whether you're talking about kids that are Yankton kids or Yankton County kids, or just kids in city limits, the kids out at the lake paying, you know, we'd have to figure that out. The reason for the timing on this is, you know, like, we really want to all talk about this right now. We don't. But we like to sell the passes for the holiday season to get, you know, buy, buy your season pass for Christmas present type thing. But yeah, we can work something else out. One of the things that we experienced, I think, with the aquatics, with the pool, when we were operating the pool, is that we kept getting different rates and different rates. And then we had a senior citizen rate, and then I think they had a, you know, so it got complex over time. And so when we planned the operation, we talked about and said, we got to have one rate and one pass, and everyone needs to have the pass, and let's keep it as clean and simple as possible. But if the commission wishes to have an additional rate for, for different types of people, you sure can do that. I think you'll open yourself up potentially to then maybe saying, well, let's keep the rates for these people, but let's increase them for, or decrease them for seniors or students or whomever. But we certainly can do that if the commission would like to do that.
Is there a way to make this, like, effective, I'm going to get really wacky here, and so if somebody kicked me under the table, it'll come from one of you. So, to, like, implement it January 1st, so there's an incentive to sell maybe the November and December passes at this year's rate, and then starting January 1, they would go up. Is that clean? Or is that dirty? I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there that maybe incentivizes those people that could handle the 60, would be comfortable spending that yet.
Yeah, that, again, commission can do whatever they'd like. If they'd like to do that, we can sell them. You know, if you're buying your, your season passes as a Christmas gift early, you get a little bit of a break. Otherwise, you're paying the increased rate after January 1. That's a potential as well. You know, what's, we're not going to benefit directly. We're just giving you our best recommendation based on our experience running these facilities over time. It's just, it's just the, it's not the fun thing to do, for sure. And we've already heard the things that you've read on social media. We've heard those too, so we understand. And people are, you know, some people do have, really have a struggle to pay that. But if you want to make it effective at a certain time, you certainly can, or, or you can pass this or a different rate, or, or vote no, and we'll come back at you with something else.
I, I like the idea of giving people some more time to buy at the current rate. So January 1 sounds good to me. I would really, I, I don't like the idea of not raising rates at this time, just because, like Amy said, we've been through this many times before, where it's, it's easy to show goodwill, and then when does that stop? At some point, you have to acknowledge the costs associated with operating these things and make those tough decisions. So that's where I'm at.
All right. Boy, this is going to be fun. We have lots of ideas thrown out and thoughts on that, which is always great, to get input. But what is your pleasure as it relates to this agenda item?
If, real quick, if we, if we were to do the January 1, do we have to do anything here? I mean, if we're voting?
Well, if you're going to make this effective January 1, it would be nice to have that action complete. You could make the motion to, you know, you could make a motion to approve effective January 1, and then by default, anybody that would buy their passes for 2022 before January 1 would pay the current rate.
All right, so I can make a motion for that?
You can.
Can I ask a question, Commissioner Brunick?
Yes.
Is it possible, since there are so many variables and so many unknowns, that we could simply look at 2022 so that we don't see three years of guaranteed increases when we have no idea where we're going to be landing after 2022?
You cer- you certainly can. It might, might look worse. Might look worse. I don't know what's going to happen, but it might, but yes, you could just, you could make, if Ben is in, if Commissioner Brunick is in the process of making a motion, he could make the motion just for 2022.
So now I have a follow-up with Todd then?
Simply, we, we just sit here, we have no idea. We just don't know. We don't know inflation. We don't know weather. There's so many things that we don't know. So for us to jump in and say we're going to do this much increase in 2023, 2024, I think, I think we should look at 2022 and focus on that.
And, and I would just, so just a quick comment, and that is, everything about how this agenda item came together, this is absolutely perfect, and it's how it should be done. And, and so kudos to Todd and staff, because how this came together is absolutely the right thing. And outside of that, the conversation that we're having here amongst us as commissioners, this is the political side of it. Now we get to make a decision that, you know, we just decide feels best, given the circumstances as we see them. So I, I just have a one thing that I want to quick clarify then. So with the, the wages, the 318,000 for wages in this agenda item, that is, or is not strictly the seasonal staff who are hired to work at the pool?
Just seasonal staff. We do, in the 202 budget, which is just the outdoor facility, used to be Phantom Memorial, now the Heathrow Family Aquatic Center, that's just seasonal. We do not account for any full-time staffing out there in that budget.
Okay. And so then I just wanted to clarify, so Amy, you're interested in 2022, but nothing as relates to 2023, 2024?
My concern, and I understand that the, that we could have, we could be in a bigger hole. I understand that. But Todd even said if we're behind in 2022, they'll have to come back and reassess. I just don't, I would rather say we're looking at rates for the next year. We're still in, this is, this is a lot of trial and error and guessing, and we can't predict what's coming. So rather than getting everybody riled up about a three year guaranteed increase, this is what it's going to cost, let's look at 2022 and get through it together and reassess.
And I, and I can actually see a lot of value then in a year over year, basically trying to keep as much the same as possible, you know, in regards to the, the upfront expense of just taking advantage of the facility and, and seeing what it's like year over year. So this is something that we can control, and understanding too, you know, Todd and the team, they're, they're got to be dynamic if the prices of Freezies all of a sudden goes up 60%, and they have to make an adjustment there. But this is something that we can probably just value as a community, understanding that if price is the same year over year, what kind of consistency are we going to be able to rely on?
And I also agree, this is really good discussion, and it's good discussion to have. I also think too that there is a benefit to our, our customers, our citizens, knowing that if there's going to be a price rate increase coming, that they could potentially buy their pass in the year before, save that money, then buy a pass for Christmas or whatnot, and then be able to save that money then, as opposed to buying it next year as well. So it also gives, gives them an incentive to want to potentially buy that at a reduced rate if they know and can plan that there is going to be a rate increase coming for the next year.
And then my only hesitancy with maybe changing things starting January 1, if the incentive really is take advantage of the pricing now before rates go up a whole 2%. I don't really, I don't fight as much incentive in that personally. I, I don't, I don't think I'm different from many folks too. But it's, we, we'd be tasking Todd and the team with marketing, get your early bird savings now of 2% before rates go up January 1.
You know, getting folks to buy this passes earlier helps us in planning. So yeah, they'd save a little bit of money if this is what Commissioner Brunick's motion turns out to be. But it also helps us do some planning. I mean, if we sell, you know, 1,000 season passes before we get close to the season open, we have some idea already what we, that we'll think for staffing and that, and ordering $5 Freezies and all those things.
I would just echo, I don't want to diminish, everything's going up. Like Commissioner Schramm said, everything's going up, and you have families that are stretched, and they have three, four, five kids, and that 2% can make a difference. And it really could incentivize. So I really like that idea as well.
If you were to leverage the food opportunity at the facility, that might be your better strategy. I know we're, we're floating into the marketing side of things here, but if you want to incentivize folks to purchase, then leverage the fact that we've got some pretty good deals on, on the food stuff. And that is purchase before the end of the year, and you can have 15% off, 20% off. It's not so much that we're not as making as much on the food, but we may have a few sales where we're selling things at cost. But, you know, if that's the, if that's the goal, is try to sell as many of these, you know, pre-sales yet this year, that'd be something to consider if you want to sweeten the pot.
Well, I'd like to add that it is 3, 3.33% instead of 2%. I guess I'd, I would make a motion to leave the rates the same until January 1, and then have the increase of the rates for the year 2022.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'm thinking, I'm understanding it, but just to make sure, the motion is to keep the rates the same as 2021 until January 1, 2022, and then the rate increase proposed by Todd would kick in. My clarification, are you just saying you just want to talk about 2022 rates in this motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Minor, are you good on that second? So then the rates that are only in this motion would be just for 2022. Did I miss anything in there, Al? Is that what you have as well?
Yes.
Any further discussion by the commission? The public has been patient. Is there any comment from the public? Seeing no movement to the podium, Al, roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
No.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
No.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number seven under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-223 regarding funding requests from the Yankton Area Arts for an opportunity to participate in a study relating to the impact arts has on the local economy and economic vitality. This is a grant match request, looking at a grant from the Americans for the Arts. What is your pleasure?
I'm going to jump in here and suggest that we fund $3,000 out of the BBB for the Yankton Area Arts match.
There's a motion on the floor for $3,000 to go to Yankton Area Arts for this project. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. I would ask, I guess, Julie to step to the podium and maybe walk us through a little bit more about this grant, what it means, and what you're looking at doing with the grant funding.
Sure. Thanks for the opportunity. I guess I would just say that this is, I would want to clarify that this is not a funding for Yankton Area Arts. It's funding for a study. And the study will cover arts throughout our community, not just what Yankton Area Arts is providing to the community. So we, Yankton Area Arts would be a point of contact between the local entities and our state and national entities that are conducting the study. So the study is actually conducted by the Americans for the Arts, and it happens every five years. That's a national organization. And to my knowledge, Yankton has never participated in the study. The last time they did the study, only Rapid City and Sioux Falls participated, and it really doesn't give us a clear picture of how people are spending their money when they go to a dance recital and buy flowers for the girls and then go out for ice cream after. So this is an opportunity to survey people who attend Summer Arts Festival, Music at the Meridian, Kids in the Park, concerts and productions at Mount Marty and Lewis and Clark Theater, and just find out beyond their ticket price, what else are they doing in Yankton? Where are they coming from? Are they camping? And how are they spending their money right here? So it'll really give us a clear picture of where we're spending our dollars and our energy, and how that's impacting our community.
Julie, do you think this could help you attain grants in the future, for example?
It can absolutely help us with grants. It can help, it can help the community by saying, look at all this funding that we have, or all the arts opportunities and quality of life programming that we have in our community. It's a good way for us to promote Yankton as a community. But yeah, absolutely, it can help us confirm to our sponsors why their donations matter and help us with grant funding as well.
I'm assuming the Summer Arts Festival will also be included in that study then as well?
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. We, we have to survey at least 800 people within a year. So, and we would want to use a variety of arts events that happen in the community, not just events that Yankton Area Arts promotes and sponsors.
I like to hear or find it interesting, because I do feel like, you know, we know a lot, a little bit more about maybe our summer lake traffic and, and kind of their habits, and obviously sports tourism and, and what folks are doing in that area. But it was interesting to hear what are the spending habits of people who are coming to art-related activities, and to see the correlation, maybe is it similar or different? And if it's similar, how can we capitalize on that? And if it's different, what do we need to look at as a community? So that sounds very interesting to me.
I think so too. And, and we have a very arts-rich community. We have lots of organizations that provide arts and quality of life programming. And I just think they're important numbers to have as a city.
Other questions from the commission for Julie, or discussion from the commission?
I was looking at some of the other reports that have been done nationally, and there was a component related to volunteer hours. And so is that part of this then as well? Nothing's changed there?
I believe so, yeah. So the Americans for the Arts will survey nonprofit arts and culture organizations in our community to find out how we are spending our money, how many employees we have, how many volunteers we use. And then we will be surveying our audiences to find out how they're spending their money, where they're coming from, household income, that kind of thing. All of the study information will then go to Americans for the Arts, and they will provide the City of Yankton with a robust report of their findings.
And is this something that we could put on a commission agenda item?
Absolutely.
When that study's complete?
Yep.
Other commission discussion, questions?
So in regards to this item, the recommendation is that the commission funds $1,000?
The motion was for $3,000, Commissioner Mybaum.
Sorry, but the recommendation was $1,000. So we're, we're
Correct.
We're fulfilling all of the local obligation of 3,000. You don't have others who are already set up? already set up for?
Not at this time.
Okay.
No one's committed yet, yeah.
But your initial ask from us was $1,000, but it sounds like you'll be?
No. She just asked what our interest was.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I, I'm just reading from the item here.
Yeah, no, but there wasn't a monetary amount requested. There were a number of entities, I believe, on the email that you were looking, sort of soliciting to see who might want to partner.
Yes.
So, given the number of entities on the list, I thought that we would be a partner in that. But of course, you all can be the, the lead, or the, the one partner, or however you want to play it, so.
Further questions or discussion from the commission? Anybody in the public? All right, we will just reiterate, before I ask Al to do a roll call, the motion in front of us is to fund $3,000 out of the BBB to Yankton Area Arts to use in a grant match, funding for the report that Julie just discussed. Al, roll call.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Abstain affiliation.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Obse.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number eight under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-215 regarding a vehicle purchase from the state bid list for the Yankton Fire Department. This is again from Lam Motors, a company out of Oneida, South Dakota. This is for a 2022 F-150 special service vehicle, four-by-four crew cab, for the price of $38,856, which currently is under the budget of $45,000, but the remaining funds will be used to equip the truck. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Al, roll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Abstain affiliation.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number nine under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-222 and resolution 21-90 regarding surplus property from the Parks Department. This is a surplus of a 2015 John Deere tractor. What is your pleasure?
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the commission? Anybody in the public? Al, roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number five under other business, there is none in front of the City Commission tonight, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting of October 25th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay, and any abstention. All right, meeting adjourned.